All right. My apologies for the delayed start. Our Board of Equalization meeting ran over. All right, we're gonna get started. It is Monday, April 27th, and welcome to the Maple Plain City Council meeting. It is 7:47, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
States of America.
And to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to adopt an agenda.
To move?
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Delong. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, and this will be a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Delong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
And Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
All right. I do not see any visitors. Yes.
Mayor, could we ask our guests that are on the phone to please mute? We do get a lot of feedback.
Okay.
It's actually Delong.
Is it Delong causing this tonight?
There's one, there's someone on the phone though too, that I don't know who that is. They're not muted. The 29 number. Right, is that better? Everyone can hear? All right. First item is visitors to be heard. I do not see any. Bobby, are there any down there?
No.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the March 23rd City Council Workshop Minutes, March 23rd City Council Business Minutes, March 30th City Council Workshop Minutes, April 6th City Council Workshop Minutes, April 9th Special City Council Minutes, April 16th City Council Workshop Minutes, and April 20th City Council Workshop Minutes.
I would ask Mayor that the 49 be pulled off for the consent agenda?
Okay. Pulling letter E?
Yeah, just to get ahead to a little bit, there's a, I got, John Delong pointed this out, there's a few things, but one that I saw is that I gotta change a lot of the top titles from direction to minutes that are on top of these here. I saw that, so, and then I think there's some typos that I just gotta clean up in here. So, yeah.
I did submit some typos ahead of time. Okay, so with that, we're looking to approve items A, B, C, D, F, and G. So I have a motion for that.
To move?
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Delong, and it will be a roll call vote.
Can I just make a, one discussion point?
Yes, please.
Just generally, Bobby, make sure to make, use people's roles instead of their first names. Going forward, people might not know who Chris is, so, in his role as a fire chief.
Yep. Makes sense. All right. Councilmember Delong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
And Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
All right, Councilmember DeLuca, I will turn it over to you to discuss the April 9th Special City Council Minutes.
I just had a correction to that minutes that I think is significant under number six. It should read, "Decided to accept the lowest responsible bid from Milo Electric from Long Lake in the amount of $77,154."
Okay.
Was that the only correction, Councilmember DeLuca?
Yes.
Okay. With that then, I, I am looking for a motion to accept the April 9th Special City Council Minutes.
Some move?
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? And it will be a roll call vote again.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Delong.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
All right. Next item of business this evening is accounts, April Accounts Payable.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before I go through this memo, I wanna make a note that I am pulling, or requesting that we pull, there's some STANTEC invoices that got sent to us late that I would like more clarification on that are from, it's all the way from the dates of September 28th to November 1st. I would like to get some more information on that, so I don't feel comfortable at this time having that go before City Council for approval. That's just one request I have, and then I, I think I'm gonna do this from now on is I, I'd like presenting a memo of just some things that stuck out to me that I think some questions might be had. So if, if you're all right with this, Mayor, I'd like to just run through this memo real quick, if that's all right. Okay. Carson, Collin, and Trader, so this should be our last General Attorney Bill that we received from Carson, Collin, and Trader. As they, they did some work through the 9th of March on some fire department stuff, and that was kind of their end date. They haven't done anything since then. It's all been, Scott Landman has been doing that for us now. So, just wanted to give that notification, but you will continue to see the criminal legal fees on there as they do all of our criminal work with West Hennepin. So that will continue, so you will see Carson, Collin on the Accounts Payable for that reason. Earl F. Anderson, we did get some, we had to get a few new signs for the road restrictions posting, so that's what that cost is in there. We post signs all over the place for the proper tonnage of roads, so that vehicles aren't violating that, aren't violating those road restrictions in place. This one, I guess, is a little bit up to debate, this next one, the interstate power system. Historically, the city of Maple Plain has paid for the generator costs at the fire department building. It was not working properly. We had a large amount of black smoke that was coming from that generator, and that we had Interstate Power System go out and look at it and make some adjustments to kind of fix that. So that's a, that's a cost that's on there that is a little bit substantial in the sense that, you know, it's a $1,026, $1,026 inspection or, um, equipment repair maintenance on that generator. Again, historically, we've paid that. You can make an argument, it's not a part of the building itself, so why are we paying for it? But it is very, um, but historically, we, we flipped that cost. Either way, how council feels about that, we can move forward. If we want to take that off and say, no, that should be a fire department cost from now on, I can understand that rationale and logic behind it. I'm just saying, this is historically how it's done, and that's why it's on there. Klein Underground, the city did purchase some asphalt for our own individual patching around the street. Some of our streets are everyone's streets this time of year from the thaw in April. It's pretty common that they're not in the greatest of shape right now. They, it's kind of weird, they get better as the year goes on a little bit, but they look bad right now. We do have a membership, annual membership due to the National League of Cities, so that's a subscription that we pay for every year. That's on here. One question might be the railroad management company. And what is that? And why are we paying all this money? That's because we have utilities along the railroad that are in their right-of-way. And so we have to pay to have our utilities in their right-of-way, and that's what that fee is for. As we all know, railroads have more power than just about every government entity there is, including the federal government at times. So, this one, we gotta chalk up and pay unfortunately. There's some costs for, some transition costs with park stuff for STANTEC in March there, and some of their, ramping up some of their stuff. They still have a significant amount of information they need to get over to us. So, I, I have a do not exceed cost from STANTEC on there. This is not it. It's, uh, it's $7,500 is the dollar they came up with, which they have not yet come close to that, but there will be some additional billings for some of that transition work, as not much of that is taking place yet. And then, VESCO, there's a cost for about, I think, just for $2,000 for a booster pump, and that's for that chlorine pump that we were talking about that has been fixed. So, that's what that cost is. That's just an analysis of some of the things that I thought council might have some questions on from the, um, from the Accounts Payable, but I'd be happy to answer any further questions if council has any.
I do. Who pays for the diesel fuel for the generator at the fire department?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, John, on that one.
Okay. Well, if it comes out of the fire department budget, then they own the, then they own the generator.
That makes sense. Yep.
If, uh, if we're filling it up, we own the generator. That's my, uh, that's my, that's my two cents on, uh, on, uh, the generator. In your narrative, Bobby, you say a, purchased some asphalt from Klein. Just how much asphalt did we buy for $7,000? Quite a bit? Are all the streets patched?
No, they're not all patched yet, but there's some we bought, yeah. No, um, I know that we've got, historically, every spring, we buy some amount of asphalt to do some patchwork ourselves. It's not the, you know, street patching that we typically do in the summer that is a larger amount, but this is a pretty, pretty common number right around here. $5,000 is typically how much we end up spending to do work right around this time of year, so, um, that didn't shock me.
Walk me through this. Is, is this a cold mix? I mean, is it, is it rolled? Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's a cold mix that we can put into, to, uh, spread it over some of the larger potholes that happen.
So it's sitting somewhere? Available for use? It's just like buying aggregate? You just bought some cold mix? Okay.
Yep. And then we get, we do further more in the summer.
Okay. What does the, I, I know what the, what the local league does. What does the National League of Cities do for us?
It's a good question. So, um, the National League of Cities, it, it's more of an information. They, they share a lot of information with us. That's going on, uh, trends within cities around the, around the country. Julie and I were talking about this actually on, on Saturday too, about the national, what is the National League of Cities? But, um, they essentially provide a variety of information to us, and also they lobby at the federal level for us. So it's an organization that, um, just about every city's a part of. Just about everyone is. They share a lot of information. That's really what they do. It's not like we're getting any, anything specific outside of, we get a number of emails from them that provides a lot of information, and then also some lobbying efforts on the federal level on our behalf.
Can you tell me why we wouldn't be a member of the National League of Cities?
No, I don't think it would be a, a good idea not to be a member. I just think that, um, it's kind of a strength by numbers type deal. And I, that's, uh, that's a whole reason why we have this organization, the National League, and then, you know, it's like being a part of the Minnesota League of Cities, but it's a little bit different, because the Minnesota League of Cities is much more involved, obviously. But the National League of Cities, uh, is an organization similar, but just from a national level, so.
And then I will make a comment about UFC and gas. Um, I, I like to see that that is, that has, uh, the numbers look much more reasonable than they did after February. But I still would like, uh, uh, I don't know if I need permission from the council or you or whatever to take this discussion offline, because I, I, I do think there was, I do think there's been some other hiccups over the course of the past eight months. And I don't want to discuss about it tonight. We can take it offline. If I'm, uh, if I'm incorrect, I'll stand down. If I'm correct, we have some accounting work to do. So would you be willing to work with me on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Bobby, what is the $150 worth of unleaded fuel?
I, I know that at, at certain times, our vehicles are used. We, we try to use them so much every month, just so that they do have some use on them.
A hundred gallons of fuel though? Or of unleaded fuel?
I'd have to, I know that we use it for a variety of different parks equipment and different things as well. So I, I know that what I ended up doing here and why it's up higher too, is that I had the total, our tanks filled up, topped off from this last time as well. Just because of the pandemic situation, I topped our tanks off, so that could be that cost right there.
Are we using the same tanks as the fire department?
Yes, but they're, they're metered in terms of, uh, there's a, supposed to keep track of what you spend.
Supposed to. Is that the operative word?
Supposed to. That is correct.
Well, as long as we're discussing it, how frequently does the water, since we, since we just spent $1,000 repairing the fire department generator, how frequently does the water treatment plant go online with generator?
I, I don't know that answer off the top of my head, John. I can find that out for you.
Well, that's gonna be important, because, because over the course of the past eight months, we spent about $150 a month running a water treatment plant generator, and I just don't know when it would run at $150 a month. So that's, in preparation of our discussion, that would be important.
I know that the fire department generator turns on every day in the morning it runs. So, and it runs for, I don't know, 20 minutes or something. So there's, I, I know it does at the fire department daily. I, I do not know with the water treatment plant how often or how long it runs for, but I can find that out for you.
I just have two quick things, Bobby.
Yeah.
On page 20, under the Excel Energy, could we update that to note that it should be Veterans Memorial Park and not Northside?
Yeah, we can, we can call them and get that changed.
Okay. And then the other was just more of a question. I know the fire department was expecting their new fire truck. Will that payment come from us, or will that come from the fire department? Because I didn't see anything on Accounts Payable.
That comes from the fire department, and that has been, that has been approved. We're cutting that check tomorrow. So, that amount, I believe it's, uh, over $200,000. That amount is, and that check is being cut tomorrow by Sharon to pay for the, pay for that, uh, two-thirds, last two-thirds payment on that truck. So, that comes from their account though.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. That's what I wanted to ask.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding Accounts Payable from anyone? Okay, with that then, I am looking for a motion to approve Accounts Payable for April pulling STANTEC September 28th through November 1st.
Some move?
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by Delong. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Delong.
Aye.
And Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
Uh, we are thrilled tonight to have our new engineer, Jeff, with us. Thank you for your flexibility. I know we had looked at last month as well, but everything happened so quickly, so thanks for your willingness to be here.
Well, thank you for having me. Get started, and my name's Jeff Lyons. I work for Bolton Make. I want to thank you for selecting us here, engineer, and we're excited to be working for you. It's, uh, take a little time, uh, to get comfortable, but the transition's a little slow, getting information from STANTEC. We have started our project. We went through all the plumbing work. We reviewed.
Excuse me one second, Jeff. I'm having a really hard time hearing you. Is everyone muted? Okay, let's try again. Thank, thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Hold up. Is that good? Um, I'll, I'll just start over. I'm from Klein with Bolton Make. Thank you for hiring us. We're excited to work for you. We, uh, we started the park project. Most removals are done. All the utilities are in. We got the water main in, uh, the storm sewer, the drain pile. And they're starting to take it straight out nicely today. I was up there, so they're starting to grade the site today. The footings are poured, uh, for the bench shell, and they may start pouring the walls, um, this week. So that'll be good. And we're looking at maybe five more weeks if we get good weather. So other than the park, uh, haven't done too much. Um, we did, uh, listen in on the Pioneer Creek back meeting regarding the capstone program plan. I didn't personally listen in, but one of our stormwater guys did. Uh, it sounded like they didn't talk much about, uh, Maple Plain, the area of the water that you're in. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue to tune in to those calls, and we'll keep you updated. Uh, the other thing we've done is we did get plans for the gateway of Maple Plain Senior Living Project, and I did stop by that today, and I also took a look at it. So we'll, uh, we'll stay on top of them when they start public improvement. We'll make sure we have somebody else watching them. Uh, are there any questions for me?
How's the transition going for you?
The transition's, uh, a little bit rough trying to get information. STANTEC, so, you know, with the virus and, and, you know, not being able to go into the office and everybody's schedules kind of haywire here, I'm just looking forward to thinking back normal and, and maybe getting some more information from STANTEC. And Bobby and I have talked, it's just gonna take time to gather the information we need and get rolling on things, so. It's been slow.
Am I the only one that is really having a hard time understanding him?
I am a little bit.
I'm having a hard time.
I can get just a bit.
I can call you on, on my phone. Let's go through that.
I have a question for you on Veterans Memorial Park.
Okay.
I was over there today, and I see what you're talking about. Looks like they're, they're gonna start to either pour walls or put up block. I don't know what they're doing. Are they pouring? I'm su, I'm assuming they're pouring walls. That's what the framing material is over there. The, the footings, uh, because of the water table and the, the height of the creek just to the north of it, the footings, the entire pit, including the footings, are four inches underwater. And obviously, they're gonna have to de-water that in order to start putting up walls, but, um, do we, being, being that those footings are obviously gonna be set in that depth of water moisture, do we risk having issues with the footings in the future?
So let me finish my calls here, and then I'll add some questions, so maybe you can hear me better. Okay, that's Mark. Can you hear me? You guys can hear me? John, yeah, the waters, the, the footing's sitting in the water right now. We'll get that pumped down. I did see how much water was in there, and I did call my structural guy just to double check. I'm not a structural engineer myself. I don't believe it's an issue that they're sitting in the water. It might slow down the cure time, but I do have a call into my structural guy just to double check with him if we should pump that down and keep it dry during this early curing. But I don't think it's an issue, but I am, I am checking on it.
Good deal.
Any other questions or comments for our engineer Jeff?
Jeff, I love the baseball cap.
Sorry, I, I can't get a haircut.
I know, I know.
Well, thank you for being here, Jeff, and again, my apologies for the late start.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
All right, we look forward to continued partnership.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
And our next item of business is our administrative reports. We have reports from our city planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, City Administration, and Public Works. Looking for approval to, um, accept the all administrative reports as submitted. Looking for a motion.
Some move?
Moved by Cahill.
I will second.
Second by Delong. Any further discussion or questions?
I had one question, Bobby, on the Public Works report.
Sure.
And did you do or could you do an analysis with them as to why we had 4 million gallons of water pumped through the septic, or through the water system, yet we had almost 12 million gallons pumped through the lift station?
Sure. Yeah, I can bring that up.
Any other questions or discussions points? Okay, with that then, we are looking to do a roll call vote to accept the administrative reports as submitted, and Bobby will look into the question with Public Works.
All right. Councilmember Fay. Councilmember Fay. Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Delong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
And Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
All right. And our next item of business is new business with Abdo Iken Myers, our annual audit presentation, and thank you so much, Bonnie, for being here, and my apologies to you too for the delayed start.
No problem. No problem at all. All right, can everybody hear me okay? Okay, perfect. All right, so I am going to share my screen with you guys and go through the present, the audit presentation that you should also, same one that you have in your packet, but I just wanna bring it up here so that you can kind of go through it together. Okay. All right. That's, okay. Can everybody see my screen?
I can.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. And as I'm going through this, please feel free to, to stop me with, um, with any questions. So, great. All right. So first, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we do during the audit, touch on internal control understanding, and then also go over some legal compliance areas. So the opinion that we issued this year is a clean opinion or unmodified, uh, is consistent with what's been given in the past. And so, um, things were in good order. We were able to obtain sufficient evidence to complete our audit. We also look at internal controls, and as in past years, there's a couple of internal control areas that I want to draw your attention to. The first one is a preparation of financial statements finding that we've The first one is preparation of financial statements finding that we've included. And this is an internal control area finding because as your auditors, we prepare your financial statements, but they are an important part of the city's financial reporting process. And they are an important piece to your kind of year-end close. And so we prepare them as an additional service, but it's important that the city reviews them and takes responsibility for those financial statements. Also, we have a limited segregation of duties finding in the report. This is another common one for the city and has been in the report for many years. Nothing that you need to be overly concerned about, but more just an understanding of how the city's transactions are processed and that there is a limited number of people involved in the processing of the transactions. Because of that, there's additional risk. So internal controls are really important to make sure that, you know, there's no fraud. Everything that's being processed is actual city business. And from the conversation I've heard tonight, it sounds like you guys are reviewing these things carefully, which is really great. You guys are an important piece of the internal control process. And with the limited number of staff and the limited ability to kind of segregate out those control responsibilities, there is additional risk. So that's what this second finding here is related to. And it's just important to keep that in mind when you're going through your duties as councilmembers. As far as legal compliance goes, there are a couple of legal compliance findings that we do have in the report this year. Every year during the audit, we look at compliance with state statutes and things like disbursements and how council meetings are run, minutes, things like that. And this year, there was a couple of areas that we wanted to discuss with you. The first one that we have here is proper supporting documentation. So when transactions are processed, it's important to have an invoice or some sort of support to say what it was and provide backup for the transaction. And that does relate to a Minnesota state statute that that support does need to exist. This year, when we looked at a couple of credit cards that were processed, I believe it was the April and March, one of the credit cards in April and March, there were some transactions that did not have the proper support. And because of that, it's really hard to tell what they relate to. And it was just those two months that we saw that didn't have the support. So I don't think it's anything to be overly concerned about, but something for you to be aware of that that support does need to exist. And it's not only a compliance statute, but it's also an important part of your internal control process too.
Bonnie, clarification real quick. The only credit card the city does have is fire department credit card, I believe.
Yes. Yeah, and I do understand that it was the two months right when there was some changeover in the fire chief position. So that's just a little bit more information about that. The second compliance area that we noticed this year, and this is kind of unusual and that doesn't come up very often, and so it can kind of get missed a little bit. And it's just an important thing to keep in mind for the future is there was some bonuses that were awarded to staff this year. And there's a Minnesota Attorney General's opinion that says that if you are going to award a bonus, you need to have a prior agreement with that employee first. Specifically, it says that any bonuses cannot be paid retroactively unless paid under a pre-existing agreement or pursuant to a collective bargaining agreement. And so if you do award bonuses, it's just important to have something in writing that says that that bonus is an option for the future. Okay, so those were the compliance and internal control areas that we noted in the report. And now I'm gonna talk.
This is Mike.
Hi.
Our bonuses were awarded though pursuant to our personnel policies.
Pursuant to a personnel policy?
Yeah, we have an employee handbook that outlines that we have the ability to do that.
Okay.
So I would have thought that would have been pursuant to the state statutes.
Okay, I know when we were looking at it, it was, we could see something that stated that the city had, that Bobby's bonus was clearly outlined, but.
In his employment. Yeah, in that, but our personnel policy allows us to do that. So I was surprised to see that called out in the audit.
Okay, yes, nope. That's definitely a good thing to note. And if it does say that, I would like to look at that further and make sure that that we have a good understanding of that before we finalize our report. Because clearly, if there is something that says that and it is a pre-existing agreement, and I'd have to look at it further just to make sure that it's not something where it needs to be specific for the employees. And so let me take a look at that and get back to you guys on that.
Makes sense.
Okay, I appreciate you bringing that up. All right, and Bobby, I'll call you about that too and we can kind of talk about it.
Yeah, I can get you what's, yeah, all that language in there and we can review that and see where we're at.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, sounds good. Okay, so on to the general fund. So here's a quick overview of the general fund fund balances. So for the end of 2019, if you look at how much the city had in your, in reserves to cover your next year's operating budget, there is about 66.5% in your, of your next year's budget in your reserves. And so that is a small increase from where you were in 2018, which was you were at that 63% level. The city does have a minimum fund balance policy of 60%. And so for the past five years here, you can see you've been right in line with that policy. Here's a quick look at your budget for 2019 compared to where you actually ended up. The budget variances that you see here in revenues and expenditures are largely due to an increase in building permit activity. And so that's where the majority of this $240,000 came from, is from increased building permits over what you had budgeted for. Overall, your fund balance did increase about $120,000 from 2018. And here's an overview of where your general fund revenues come in from. So mostly from taxes, you can see that for the past three years here. And here's that increase in license and permits from 2018 to 2019. And here's a similar look at your general fund expenditures by type. You can see where the largest source of your payments go to. You see public safety here for those contracted services. And then general government includes things like administration and finance, city hall and those types of things. Here is your capital project funds. So separate from the general fund, you have four capital project funds that account for larger projects and equipment purchases that the city makes during the year. And so your major capital project fund here, this is where the majority of your activity flows through and where most of your funding goes to. And then you do have a couple of smaller capital projects that are holding some balances as well. I want to point out this downtown development project. That one has had a negative cash balance for a few years now. My interest in it is there was a grant that was planned for that project and so there were some costs associated with that. And I know that that's something to think about and how that will be funded in the future. And then here's a couple of special revenue funds. So special revenue funds are very specific resources that are put away for different purposes. And so there's the fire partnership that you all are involved in and along with some other cities that is accounted for as a special revenue fund in the city's accounting system. And then there's also the EDA, which not a ton of activity flows through there, just a small change from last year.
I gotta make one note here. I think in the past, we've made notes to close down this economic development fund and move it over into capital. So when I was reviewing this, I was like, oh Mike, you're gonna have one here on me because I remember we talked about this with council. So just one note, you know, that will be moved in the future to, we'll close that fund out because we funded that ourselves and we stopped the levy amount, that $25,000 that we were doing in the past. But we'll move that, transfer that over to capital improvement funds. So I just wanted to point that out. That's one thing I caught.
Okay.
That'll go a long way to finishing the park.
That's good.
That sounds great. I made a note of that too Bobby, so I'll make sure that we catch that next year.
Thanks.
And then here are the debt service funds that are associated with the, with the public works portion of the city's debt. So things that were done for streets. This would be like your non-water and sewer-related bond issuances. So there's a total outstanding here of about $4 million with the next one maturing in 2023. And then the last one falling off in 2039. And we wanted to give you a look at kind of what are your principal and interest payments look like over the next 10 years? So here you can see kind of what that looks like mapped out. So you do have a small decrease after that 2023 maturity. And then again, after 2028, there's another drop there.
Bonnie, do you know, or Bobby, do you know off the top of your head on that last slide, what the rates are on those GO bonds?
Yeah, sure do. I can pull those up in two seconds here.
Oh, no, there's a cutie.
Oh, sorry, my screen flashed there, yeah. Okay, so those ones, so there's one that has, the one that's maturing in 2023 has an interest rate of 1.45 to 2.8. And then the rest of them range from about 1 to 2 to 3.375 is the highest.
Yep.
On the bonds that are maturing in 2023, the 213A general obligations, do you know what, do you know what that financed off hand Bobby? Was that the water treatment plant?
That would have been 2023, that would have been issued in 2003 then?
I guess.
Yeah, that would, the water treatment plant I thought was 2008.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And that should be 2028, 2003. I'd have to, I believe that would be a street reconstruction.
Okay, it's not important. I just wanted to know if it was water treatment.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Water treatment was 2008.
And then speaking of the water, water treatment plant here, here's a look at the water fund. So here's your cash flows and cash balances for the water fund. This top chart here is going over cash from your operating receipts. So how much you're bringing in in billings. And then looking at your operating costs and also your debt payments. And this is focused just purely on how much cash went in and out during the year. And so in 2019, pretty consistent year with 2018, and not quite enough to cover your operating costs and debt payments, but it has been sufficient for those operating, to cover those operating costs there. And then this second chart is a look at your cash balances. And so the gray portion here is some unspent bond proceeds that have existed in the past few years that have been pretty much spent down all the way. And then this green portion is an amount that has been set aside for capital. And then the blue portion is an unrestricted amount available for spending and has not been designated for anything else. And so there has been a good increase in the cash in the unrestricted portion there. And then here's a similar look at your sewer fund. So for the sewer fund for 2019, this gray portion did increase by a lot. It did go up quite a bit. The main reason for that is there were some payments due to Met Council from previous years that were paid out in 2019. So I believe that was about $130,000, somewhere around there, that was paid out in 2019. That was actually for previous years. And so that's why you have a larger increase in your, in your cash operating costs than you did in 2018 and 2017. And then if you look at the second chart, the cash balances for the year, that is kind of the same, same cause there. There was a large payment out to Met Council. And so you had a fairly significant decrease in the sewer fund cash with the majority of it being designated for capital. And so overall, there's about $15,000 left in the sewer fund at the end of the year. And then here's a look at your stormwater fund. So stormwater fund operating receipts have been sufficient to meet those debt and operating cost needs. And then you just, you have pretty consistent cash balance with where you had been in previous years. Here's just an overall look at the cash balances for all of the funds of the city. Like we were talking, I mentioned earlier, you have the general fund and then you have other funds with funds that are set for specific purposes, like different capital projects. And so the city overall cash is around the 6 million mark, but that is broken down into different pots of money that's reserved for different things. The rest of the slides on here, we've included some comparative information for the city, looking at taxes and debt and things like that. We do not have access yet to the 2018 data. So as soon as we do have that, I will update this and get that over to you guys so you can see it. But we have included on here the city for the past four years and then also class four cities, which is just looking at population. And then also cities in Hennepin County. So you can kind of see where you compare on that scale. And so here's the tax rate information. You have had a pretty consistent decrease over the past four years. And then also the.
Bonnie, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to jump in here because this tax rate number is the one that I really want council to pay attention to because this is really important. Yeah, you can look in 16, it shows that the tax rate was 76.8%. This is the hard work you guys have put in on keeping these budgets where they've been at. That's really high. Now, we're a smaller city, that's where that class four, it doesn't mean that we're a bad city or anything. We're just a smaller city. But we've worked really hard. You can see that the gap there was like 17, almost 18% in that area of where cities, where we were at, were at in 2016. You look where we're at now, lowering the tax rate by over 13% in four years is very rare. That doesn't happen. It really doesn't. And so I just want to point out that when we're not, you know, increasing our budgets or different things, we're bringing that tax rate down, which then, that has, that's a big impact on our city. So that's really good work. I just wanted to point that out.
Yep, that's a great point. And then here is the debt per capita. So that did go up in 2018. There was that bond issuance in 2018 and then has gone back down as things have fallen off there. And then your debt service expenditures as a percent of total, explain, I'll explain this one a little bit. And so when we look at how much total is the city spending in their governmental funds, well, how much of that is for debt? And so you guys at the end of 2018, where it's about 12% of your total expenditures were debt-related. And then here's some current and capital expenditures for governmental funds. Just some data to look at on different types of spending that occurs. And then for the water fund and the sewer fund, how much of your debt are you able to cover with your net operating cash income? So for the sewer fund, this one is pretty skewed because of that large Met Council payment that came out of cash in 2019. That's why that one looks negative or is negative. So because of that large payment, you ended up with negative operating income there. All right, and that is my little presentation. And I would love to take any questions that you all might, might have on that information or anything else regarding the audit or any of the 2019 financial data.
So anyone have any questions for Bonnie?
Madam Mayor, if I can make a statement to Bonnie? Bonnie, I have sat through probably seven of these presentations over the years. And I think your presentation you just did was the most succinct, helpful I've ever. And I think your presentation you just did was the most succinct, helpful I've ever had. Thank you.
Well, that's great, especially since there's possibly a finding in there that shouldn't be, so. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Bonnie?
I just, whether it's a question for Bonnie or for Bobby, twice he had mentioned a payment in 2019 to Met Council. Why, why isn't this, why, why is my cartoon bubble not going?
Yeah, I'll, I can chime in on this. So I held a large sum of payments to the Met Council. I'd made this note to council a few times. On behalf of, I wanted some information on INI increases. Our bill had jumped. And so I withheld paying them for a number of months over not getting information I wanted. As a result of that, we had to pay them at a point. So it's, it's not a, it's not a separate payment or something, you know, that was just for one year in sense of, oh, it's a project cost. No, those are just INI and sewer treatment payments that I was holding back from them to get that information from them. Now, I didn't like the information I got back from anyway, but I ended, at the end of the day, we had to pay them yet. And so that's what that was.
So was this money you withheld in 2018 that you ended up paying in 2019?
Correct.
And what's the dollar value we're talking about here?
It's like $130,000 or something. Yep. Yeah. It doesn't have an impact in terms of, I mean, the money would have been paid either in 18 or 19. It's, we didn't get charged interest or anything on it. They got their money and that was, that was it. But I held it because I wanted some information from them.
Any other questions for Bobby or Bonnie regarding the audit? Bobby, do we need to make a motion to receive this?
I, yes, I would.
Yeah. All right, with that, I am looking for a motion to receive the Abdo Eichenmeyer's annual audit.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any other further discussion?
Will, will the formal audit become part of the packet?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can send you out that. I have a draft copy of it. We're going to finalize it. So I'll send that out to you as soon as, once we finalize it, I'll send it out, too.
We'll send it out or post it?
I can do both. Yeah.
Oh, please.
Yep.
All right, hearing no further discussion, then we will take a roll call to accept the audit report.
Councilmember Cahill. Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
And Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
And Bonnie, I too echo Mike's thoughts and thank you for your great work and your partnership with the city.
Great, thank you so much for your time tonight. Have a great night.
You as well.
You, too.
All right, next item of business is council reports. And let's start with Councilmember Cahill.
Well, personnel met and we have started the review of the employee handbook. So we're gonna do the half, first half this week. And then just a note, Bobby mentioned this, I think, in workshop, but for business owners out there, Hennepin County has started a program with forgivable loans, similar to the PPP program that a lot of small businesses couldn't get. So this is specific just to county businesses. So there's a likelihood that, higher likelihood that they'll get it. So on the Hennepin County website, under COVID, there's more business resources.
Thank you. Councilmember DeLong.
Just a multitude of COVID-19 meetings this month, as you all know. And I also called in and listened to the League of Minnesota City's conversation with the governor on Friday. And then I have a meeting with the police commission tomorrow. That is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Fay.
Well, as you know, I've attended numerous meetings with you all every week for the past five. We are back online now with the Orno Rotary. The mayor and I have attended the past two virtual meetings. It's not quite the same because Rotary is a little more touchy-feely. But we, we had a, we had a meeting last Thursday and we're in the process of trying to formulate a grant to leverage some Rotary money with some district Rotary money in order to benefit some items in our Veterans Memorial Park improvement. I've attended a couple of TAC meetings for the Pioneer Sarah Creek watershed and this morning sat through a two-hour budget discussion. And we're going in the right direction. That's all I can say right now until it's been packaged and formalized and approved, but we're going in the right direction financially. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fay. I was able to attend the regional council and mayor's meeting virtually and as well have been attending the Rotary. And I was on the webinar last week with the governor with a couple of our other council members. So that's been great. And then in addition to that, I've been meeting about every other week on a Zoom call with Representative Phillips. And it's been great to have his partnership and representation. And he actually represented and used one of our small businesses in an example on the floor. So it was fun to hear Maple Plain out in DC be mentioned. And then also have been meeting weekly with Senator Osmick, who is bringing our concerns forward as well. And just kudos to council and to staff and for everyone's availability in making this pandemic a crisis. In the beginning, we were meeting an additional three times a week. And that has since slowed down to twice. But I appreciate everyone making this a priority and the teamwork that's been done and for our staff and our police and fire. It's just, it makes a hard time much easier when you're working with a great group of people who are like-minded in the fact that our residents are top priority and the safety and services continue. So thank you all for the great work. Any other business from anyone?
Well, only that you forgot me.
Oh, Councilmember DeLuca, the best for last. Sorry, everyone else.
It's late, I understand.
I'm zoomed out.
I will just say, everybody else has covered the things that I had. So you were on the right track, anyway.
But you still matter. All right, Bobby, anything from you?
No, I just want to, just want to thank you guys all for making this virtual meeting go smoothly. Everything went really well and really appreciate all that you guys do.
And we will not be meeting for dinner as we are honoring social distancing and restaurants are closed. So if anyone was concerned, we are being law-abiding citizens. All right, with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second. Second.
Oh, second by Fay.
Oh, no, pick one.
You had your fingers out first. Roll call vote, Bobby?
Oh, yeah. Member DeLong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero. We are adjourned.
Oh, okay. We are adjourned.
Mike is up here.